Mr. Morris?
Here.
Chairperson, Mrs. Granato?
Here.
And Weathersfield High School Student Representative, Mr. Justin Bianchi.
All present.
Okay, thank you, Ellie. I would like Haley Konashevich from Emerson Williams, Grade Three, to come on up to the front and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, Haley. Holly, you want to make a motion here?
Oh, thank you. I would like to move that, oh, I'm sorry. Actually, what I want to do is add an agenda item for number 6B, which would be, we need board approval for a grant for a supplemental enhancement.
Second the motion to add.
Okay. Any discussion? Mr. Emmett?
Yeah, this is a request by administration for board approval to pursue a grant through the federal government, approximately $66,000 for a program at Weathersfield High School that will be run by our tech ed guru, Sukoko.
Any other discussion on this? Okay.
Do you want me to read the motion?
We will on 6B, okay?
Okay, fine.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so that's on our agenda. At this point, Mr. Emmett?
Yes. Good evening, everyone, and welcome back. I certainly don't like to start off on a sad note, but this evening I must. Yesterday, our longtime secretary at Weathersfield High School, Cindy Pagliarello, passed away. Cindy was a fixture at Weathersfield High School and was kind of the go-to person when any child came in with needing a late pass, or that parent that needed to bring lunch, or any type of cellphone, or anything that a student forgot. Cindy was the type of person that had a smile on at all times, and she will be deeply missed at Weathersfield High School. So if you would please join me in a moment of silence in honor of Cindy Pagliarello, I greatly appreciate it. Thank you, Mrs. Granato. That's all for this evening.
Okay, next on tonight's agenda is the approval of the minutes of our regular Board of Ed meeting on June 13, 2017. Are there any corrections?
Move to approve?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Those minutes are approved. Also, the approval of the minutes of the Special Board of Ed meeting on August 16, 2017. Are there any corrections to those?
So moved.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? So those minutes are approved. So is there anyone wishing to make a public comment? Please come on up to the podium and state your name and address, and may I remind you that we do have a limit of five minutes.
Good evening. Jamie Dirksen, 290 Walcott Hill Road. I have three children in the Weathersfield school system. My oldest son is entering second grade at Charles Wright. My middle son is starting kindergarten at Charles Wright. And my youngest son will be starting pre-K3 at Webb. I'm here this evening to voice my family and our school community's ongoing concern about class sizes at our elementary schools. In particular, the already large size of my son Nolan's incoming kindergarten class at Charles Wright. Currently, our kindergarten class sizes are 23 and 24 kindergarteners per class. If you look at the common patterns of enrollment at our school, those numbers can and probably will grow larger with late registrations, as well as people moving into our district. The alarming ratio of 24 four- and five-year-old kindergarteners to one teacher does not seem like an appropriate one, especially when you take into consideration students within the class that will need additional support. My family is fortunate that I am taking a few years off from teaching full-time to stay home with our three boys. I regularly volunteer at the school and did so when my oldest son started kindergarten two years ago. My son's kindergarten class then was 23 to 24 kindergarteners. Being in that classroom on a regular basis, I can attest firsthand the impact that a large kindergarten class has on the students as well as the parents. The classroom was overcrowded and overwhelming, especially for the kindergartners. One kindergarten classroom itself is physically much smaller than the other. It is much too small to house a large class size of 23 to 25 little active bodies, and doesn't allow them much freedom in their movements and personal space. With the complete redesign of kindergarten, we have shifted away from focusing on social-emotional development of our children and moved toward higher academic standards. We expect them to do so much academically, yet we are not giving them an appropriate teacher-to-student ratio that meets their social-emotional needs. With larger kindergarten class sizes, this crucial social-emotional component, which requires a lot of attention and nurturing, is what in the end will be sacrificed. Little kids thrive when they have a school environment that promotes positivity, flexibility, and individual attention. That's not possible with a large kindergarten class. Having larger class sizes leads to more behavioral issues, especially in the younger grades. My older son Nathaniel struggled with his behavior in kindergarten. It didn't take us long to realize that he was acting out because, quite frankly, he was trying to compete with his 22 other classmates for his teacher's individual attention. He's an outgoing, bright, inquisitive, emotional child. I love every single one of those qualities, as they will serve him well later on in life. However, in an overcrowded kindergarten classroom, these qualities quickly became problematic for him. We worked with his dedicated teacher and amazing social worker at the school to help my son make good behavioral choices. It was a struggle for my son, and unfortunately, his self-esteem as a student suffered. With maturity and a smaller class size of 19 in first grade, my son thrived and became a model for his peers, both academically and behaviorally. Kindergartners are just learning how to behave in a classroom setting. We need to create an environment that focuses on their learning with positive individual attention and positive redirection of undesired behavior. This can truly only be achieved when there are fewer students per class with fewer distractions. Most behavioral issues in young, school-aged children are linked to children seeking attention, regardless of the kind they receive. Small class sizes have fewer behavioral issues because teachers are able to be more flexible with their lessons, have more time to build positive relationships, and spend time on redirection. These are all the things that our kids need from kindergarten. Obviously, we're well aware of the budget woes of our state and school district. However, we need to invest in the social-emotional development of our young children. We respectfully request that an additional kindergarten teacher be added to Charles Wright. Moving forward, we would also like to see the Board of Ed adopt a policy that puts a cap on the number of kindergarten or K through 2 students per classroom. It is unfair to our children that they be placed in an overcrowded school environment. While the story I shared with you is very personal, it's focused as one that is shared by many other Charles Wright families, as represented in the letter you received earlier this week. We all want our children to have an appropriate teacher-to-student ratio to better meet our young children's social, emotional, and academic needs. I want to thank you for listening to our concerns.
Thank you very much.
Good evening to the members of the Board of Ed and people here today. My name is Amanda Greenwell. I'm at 225 Knott Street. I'm also here to speak to you about kindergarten class size. Jamie has touched on many important points, and so I'll not reiterate so many of them, but I'd like to expand on a couple and maybe add something. I'm a Weathersfield parent of three children. My oldest, Nolan, is going into second grade. I have twins, Sean and Connell, who are going into kindergarten, and so for me, this affects two kindergarten students. They're very excited to go into this academic year. I'm also an educator myself. I'm a former high school teacher in the District of Avon. I currently run the Writing Center at the University of St. Joseph, and I also teach at the Central Connecticut State University as well. I also teach pre-service teachers. Class size, for me, is an enormous issue in education. To me, class size can determine, it's immeasurable in some sense, what a smaller student-to-teacher ratio can achieve for our students as they learn. And I believe that's true at all levels of education. I particularly think that in kindergarten, when we have children who are learning to be students, who are learning about what education is in a setting that's beyond preschool and beyond daycare, and learning how to be students, you hear kindergarten teachers often talk to students about sort of how to use their minds, but also how to use their bodies, right? So in kindergarten and the elementary years, we're also looking at students just learning how to physically exist in spaces with other students who are growing and learning and want to play. We have excellent kindergarten teachers at Charles Wright. They, with rigorous standards and, you know, a really, a rigorous curriculum, they also are encouraging our children to learn through play, right? And to learn how to interact with each other. And I just can think that having 23 to 25, and we could see more than this, right? Enroll by the time school begins. I want those teachers to have the environment that allows them to do their jobs well. And that's me speaking as an educator. And as a parent, I want my children to be in a classroom that allows them to develop as learners. So, you know, when I think about this issue in our town, and I think about class size, and I think about, you know, being an educator and being a parent, I also think about, I know this, there's a domino effect whenever you make a change to a school year, and I know there are things you're going to have to consider as a board and, you know, to talk to the principal of the school. And quite frankly, I really urge you to talk to the kindergarten teachers at this school. I can think of no better source, you know, as you consider this issue, than the teachers who are going to be working with these students. Talk to them about who they know is enrolled in this course. Look at the class list. Look at the needs of those individual students. Because there are already students, I am sure, enrolled who have special education needs and who have English language learner needs and other needs that I can't name right now, but are probably on those questionnaires that each of us, as parents, fill out before we send our students to kindergarten. Look at that information. Think about that. Think about equity in the town. Think about class size in other kindergarten and lower elementary spaces. Because this is going to make an enormous impact on 50 young people in this town. And it's going to make an impact on two educators who give everything that they have to their classroom. These are teachers you want to retain. You want to keep in town. You don't want to get burned out on their jobs. They're awesome. Our kids are awesome. I really hope that the Board of Education considers the long-term effect that this can have for students entering kindergarten and the people who educate them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Mr. Emmett? Do you, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, my goodness. Faster.
I was trying to be polite. Hi, I'm Kristy Salters-Pedno, 15 Fairmont Street. I am also here to talk about class size, and I think that Jamie and Amanda have really articulated some of the major issues. But I am a researcher, so I always, when it's time to make an argument, I always fall back on research. And so I just wanted to share some of the research on class size that's available. So in preparation, I read two literature reviews, one by the Center for Public Education and one by the Brookings Institute. And both of those literature reviews came to a similar conclusion, which is that class size is very important, but particularly under certain conditions. So here are the conditions where class size has the largest effect. One, grades K through 3, so the earliest grades matter the most. Two, class size has maximum benefits when there are no more than 18 students assigned to a class. So as you heard, at Charles Wright in kindergarten this year, we are already well above that limit. Third, class size is especially important for ELL, minority, and low-income students. As you know, there's a large population of those students that are served by Charles Wright. So I know that there are a lot of difficult decisions that the Board of Education and the superintendent need to make. I really think it's important to bring evidence to bear in making those decisions. I know that we can't have everything that we want. But I do think that class size is a particularly critical issue. I also want to add, just on a personal note, I also had a child in kindergarten two years ago in that year that there was 23 and 24 in the class. And you absolutely cannot shoehorn that many kindergartners into a room. We have incredibly gifted kindergarten teachers, but they are not miracle workers. And I think that asking them to teach that many kindergartners is asking for a miracle. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
There's actually two more parents at Charles Wright Kindergarten here, but they've pretty much covered it all.
You want to come on? Come on up. Come on up.
Say ditto.
I'm glad you're advocating.
They're more well-prepared than I am. Where's my speech at?
My name is Michael McEwen. I live at 23 Flower Street. I have two kids at Charles Wright. Kayden's going into kindergarten, and Anika's going into third grade. And I would volunteer on Thursdays, and it was very busy, very organized, very crowded in her kindergarten class. I saw the governor speak on the first day of school last year, and that was amazing. If you look at Charles Wright as far as the area that it's in and the state that it's in, I didn't come here to complain about this. I want to make sure that we get the right amount of kids in the right classrooms. But we, I think, as the school is falling a little bit behind, it's a little bit in disrepair. And as I was watching the governor, there, we have an outside, we have an outside trailer that is being used. I don't see that in any other elementary schools. But, okay, that's fine.
Hi, Chris.
Yeah, they have one also?
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that we are doing the future residents of our town a justice by educating them properly. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other Charles Wright parents? Come on up.
My name is Michelle McDoyle. I live at 15 Flower Street in Weathersfield. I have three children. My oldest is in high school. I have one in junior high, and I have one entering kindergarten. All the major points have been well, well-spoken about tonight, but as a mom, one of the other aspects that I can just imagine the first few weeks of school is my child, or any other child, who may not be used to being away from a mom or a dad, and just, I can't imagine how those teachers have just one student who may be upset and taking away their attention from the rest of the class, is one, how they can manage 24 students of that age, just being away for probably the first time for a lot of these kids. But I wanted to show my support for the teachers. We have amazing, amazing kindergarten teachers who go, already go way above and beyond. But I'm also here just to voice the concern for these youngest, most impressionable and most vulnerable of all of our students, our kindergartners. With the class sizes as they are, some of our children are just four years old, and they may feel scared or lost those first few days. And with the class size that big, some of our teachers, as well as they are, may lose and not be in touch with each of those children and their emotional needs those first few days. Just the safety of it, losing track of those students, I'm sure could be a possibility. I know my oldest child was known to run away from the class at time to time, and with smaller class sizes at that time, the teacher knew exactly when and where all of her students were. But I can't imagine having 24, 25 students at the first couple weeks of school, not knowing all of your students, that that could be a possibility. But as a parent and a taxpayer of this town, I trust that you, as a board, and I trust our schools and I trust our teachers, to always be our eyes and ears on our children, and while they're away from us, and also educating them. But as we also have a duty to create a realistic and safe situation for our teachers to be successful in doing so. But with the class sizes of this big, I fear that we're probably setting up some amazing teachers for failures, like was stated, they aren't miracle workers. So I ask you to please consider adding an additional kindergarten teacher to Charles Wright to meet the best social, emotional, and educational needs of our young students. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Mr. Emmett, do you have any communication to share?
I do. Thank you, Mrs. Granato. Good evening, everyone. Again, welcome back to the 2017-2018 school year. This evening, Mr. Bushy will be providing you with an update on projects that have occurred over the course of the summer in preparation for the 2017-2018 school year. Tonight, on the agenda, you will see an action item related to the school calendar. Just want to make sure I explain to the public, we have a minor adjustment we need to make to our 17-18 calendar. This is based upon the fact that the state set the SAT administration on the same day that we have an early dismissal for elementary conferences and professional development. When we provide the SAT, there are certain students that will receive accommodations, including extended time. For us to administer the SAT on an early dismissal day, we would not be able to get enough minutes in the day to offer the extended time option for some of those students that are eligible for it. So our proposal this evening is to slightly alter the calendar, where it moves that half-day out one day. So it's off from the SAT administration day out to the next day. And we'll talk further about that when that comes forward. Very pleased to report that the administrative retreat occurred last week. We were together most of the week, Monday through Thursday. We did a lot with regard to legal and legislative updates, school improvement planning, leadership development, and capacity building. Yesterday began the first day of new teacher orientation. This is always one of our favorites. We met over at the High School Media Center yesterday morning. We have several new teachers who are replacements for retirees, or folks who have left the district. The orientation provides new staff with the opportunity to become familiar with the district, and they are also supported in getting ready for seeing students on day one. Convocation will take place at Weathersfield High School next Monday morning. Very much looking forward to that. We'll hear an address from Mrs. Granato, a brief speech from myself. The most inspiring piece that I cannot wait for is an address by our Weathersfield Teacher of the Year, Charlene Maddick, a science teacher at Silas Dean Middle School. Very much looking forward to that. I want to get a message out to parents. I want to talk about transportation. I'm sure all of you, in one way, shape, or form, have had the opportunity to deal with transportation issues in this district. I am very proud to report that next week, you will see a change. We have a new transportation company now in place. Autumn Transportation is now taking the place of Durham Transportation Services. Currently, Autumn has all drivers in place. They're currently doing dry runs, so you are going to start seeing the buses making the trips around town, getting the routes squared away. We have new buses, so gone are the days of the old, tired, many-year-old buses that we had. They will be marked Weathersfield Public Schools. That's an expectation of ours. In addition to that, with Autumn Transportation, they are a local company based right out of Rocky Hill. So we have already had the owner and the manager, the yard manager, in to meet with the administrative staff over the course of the summer. We set out our expectations. Mr. Kazak, our business manager, along with myself, will be visiting the yard next week to set forth expectations of our drivers. So we're very excited and then looking forward to a new partnership with Autumn Transportation. I will say that I ask for your patience. Obviously, with a new company, we're certainly going to have growing pains. We'll be out-monitoring routes as the year gets started, and we'll make adjustments as needed. But very happy to have a new transportation company aboard. Again, earlier this evening, you already talked about adding the agenda item with regard to the grant. This is a federal grant that we are pursuing. The reason that I've asked that it be added tonight is it is a grant that must be spent during the month of September. So we are currently in the running for it. We do need your approval tonight to move forward with that. So the state currently is processing it. We're hopeful that we get it. And then we have a grant total of a month to spend it out, the month of September. So that's the piece there. Also want to talk about the issue of the class size. You know, I sit here, and I'm listening to parents talk about class size, and I feel the same exact way. And I strike that hard balance between low-class sizes and the reality of the budget. So one of the things we've done over the course of the summer is the Board of Education has gotten a weekly update of class sizes throughout the entire summer. And class sizes, they, they're all over the place. Back in the spring, we had a major issue at Webb with the 5th grade going into 6th grade. That no longer exists at this point in time. We've had kids move out. The issue at Charles Wright is certainly real. As of this afternoon, looking at the most recent numbers, the projection, currently I have 23 and 23. Those are hardfast, they're registered, they're in there. I have two more in the pipeline, which we push it up to 24 and 24. So my proposal in terms of moving forward is, again, I don't have additional positions. We don't have them in the budget. So we're looking at adjusting from within. So my plan is to reduce the number of sections of 6th grade at Charles Wright from 3 to 2, which would give us a total of 23 and 24 at 6th grade. Add a third section of kindergarten at Charles Wright. And that, right now, we're looking at 16, 16, and 16. Now, with that being said, I also want to segue into the budget. I don't know how many of you happened to watch the news on Friday with Governor Malloy's latest press conference, but here's the reality of it. Weathersfield Public Schools stands, and the town of Weathersfield, stands to lose over $9.3 million over $9.3 million in educational cost sharing funds. That's everything. That's everything we get. That represents a approximate 16% reduction in our operating budget. Now, I'm trying very hard to balance between not having the doomsday, "Oh, my God, we're going to lose everything," and focusing on making sure that we're ready to open the school system. We are. We are staffed appropriately. We have everything together in terms of materials and supplies. We are ready to roll. But I have to be extraordinarily clear and upfront with you. A cut of $9.3 million is devastating. That will impact class size, that will impact programs, that impacts people. Um, I've talked about it already in the Hartford Current. I, uh, met with Fox 61 yesterday. I've spoken with the mayor. I've emailed our delegation, which I call upon again to, to get together and let's get a budget passed. What, um, we'll be talking about this evening as we talk further about our Finance and Information Committee meeting that we had just before this board meeting, is looking at scenarios of reduction. Million dollars by million dollars. And it's going to be a stark reality here. Our expectation is high for our kids and, you know, we've seen some great growth in our test scores. You talked about rigorous instruction at the kindergarten level. I love to hear that. That's exactly what we're striving for. We're striving, not only for that, but we're striving for emotional support, social workers in every building. When I came in 2008, we didn't have a social worker in every building. They, they danced from building to building and they got to emergencies when they could. So these are the types of things that have the potential of being cut. I need to make sure that I'm clear with you on that. Right now, we know that that number is not etched in stone, but it's out there and we do need to look at that. So with that being said, uh, we are looking forward to starting the, uh, 2017-2018 school year. We are ready to go. I'm proud to report that today at Silas Dean Middle School, I had, uh, many seventh graders in, learning about how to open their lockers, where classes are, um, getting along with each other, cyberbullying. They had a session on that today. We will be having meet and greet coming up next week. That is always a huge hit. Uh, I had sent a, a school messenger message out last week talking with you about, um, holding off a week on the teacher assignments. Our expectation is the teacher assignments will go out. Those letters will go out tomorrow. The only issue at Charles Wright at this point in time, obviously, we have some other things we need to deal with. We have to deal with finding location. We want to be close to kindergarten. I have an issue with furniture. Um, the reality is here, uh, as of yesterday, I enacted a budget freeze. All non-discretionary spending is held right now because we don't know where we're at. So we're going to have to be creative. Mr. Bushy, sitting out in the audience usually is creative and will do the best he can to make sure that the kids have what they need. Um, but the reality here is this, I, I don't want to be all doom and gloom, but I also have to be realistic as well. Um, if these, you know, if this cut happens, we're, along with many other districts in this state of Connecticut, um, we, we've got a problem. We've got a big problem. So just want to make sure everybody's aware of that. So, with that, Mrs. Granato, that's communications.
Okay. I think thank you. Okay. Next on our agenda are action items and we have, um, two. John, can you read Action Item 6A for us?
Yeah, I just got to scroll down to it since we don't have paper anymore. Move that the Weathersfield Board of Education approve a revision of the 2017-18 district calendar to include Wednesday, March 21st as a regular school day and designate Thursday, March 22nd as an early dismissal day for parent-teacher conferences and professional development in order to accommodate SAT testing scheduled for March 21st at Weathersfield High School.
Okay. Do I have a second? Any discussion? I think everybody had a chance to look at it. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Any abstentions? Motion 6A passes. Polly, would you read Motion 6B?
Uh, move that the, uh, Weathersfield Board of Ed grant, grant approval for application of the Carl D. Perkins Secondary Supplemental Enhancement Grant Application, RFP number 818, with a grant period of August 21st, 2017 to September 30th, 2017. The grant application is for $66,477.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay.
Uh, I, I just had a question.
Go ahead, Paul.
Could you, um, and maybe I didn't absorb it and I didn't quick, uh, but I just was wondering if you could explain it just a little bit more in detail. Uh, but what I'm seeing here is next generation workforce, how would we, uh, spend that?
It is indeed. Um, we've worked, uh, yes, here she comes now, who was part of the process. Exactly.
Hi, good evening. Uh, the supplemental, uh, grant is a competitive grant. Uh, for those that applied, there was a two-week window to apply, so, um, Sukoko and Tom Moore moved very quickly this summer. Essentially, the grant application includes, um, industrial equipment for our students in primarily manufacturing area, including a laser engraver, a 3D printer and also, um, an industrial sewing machine. It comes training for the teachers and so that our students would have the opportunity to actually be working on industrial type equipment while in school, um, as we look at increasing the manufacturing, um, opportunities for students. Um, so this grant really is about equipment and as Mr. Emmett already announced, um, you have to spend money in about a month, which is really an interesting grant. Um, so this industrial equipment then prepares us to be a potential, um, NASA hunch school. Uh, there are only two schools in Connecticut that are current NASA, NASA partners. Um, in order to be a NASA hunch school, you would have to have this type of industrial equipment. So, um, that is the, kind of the foundation of this grant of step one, um, and then applying for our application with NASA.
So what, what exact, the, um, this amount of the $66,000 would go toward, uh, training and, um, and equipment for this year? Then if we became, or if we applied and became a NASA hunch school, uh, what would that entail? Does that ultimately, is that a grant to fund it or is it something we have to fund?
Um, learning opportunities for student, and there's a lot of different ways you can implement that in with the, the student. Um, there are learning opportunities like we've seen for jets and DECA and clubs and, um, it can be defined in different ways. Um, we have not talked in depth about those next steps. Uh, we have not committed to any funding. Um, but again, we can't look at that partnership unless we have this industrial equipment that we've typically, um, have not been able to afford. So that's what the supplemental grant offers us to grow that, um, area of the CTE curriculum.
So is that a, once we have that, uh, that equipment, then, um, then the second step is to apply?
Correct.
As a school, so if we don't, um, if, if we're not
If we don't
A recipient of the NASA hunch or we're not, what, what happens with the equipment?
Uh, we will be able to use it within curriculum perspective of our courses also. So most definitely, it'll be, offer a lot of opportunities for our students, whether we are accepted as a hunch school or not.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much.
Sally, when do we expect to hear from the state? I know we're in the running right now for this.
Um, any day.
Hmm, okay.
Uh, on or around yesterday.
Perfect.
Okay. Diane?
Um, I would urge, urge support of this. This is, um, pretty consistent with some of the things we've been talking about in, um, programs and services. Opening up, um, some of our learning opportunities to kids who might not be interested in college or might be interested in more hands-on, um, type of activities. So I, I would urge we support this because this is one of the, um, I forgot which group was that came to one of our last meetings. Was it the, um, uh, they used to call them shop and home ec.
Yeah, tech ed teachers.
The tech ed teachers and stuff?
Oh, unified arts.
Unified arts.
Right, at the middle school.
They, I mean, they mentioned some of this programming, but couldn't go forward because they lack this equipment, the laser printer and, and so forth. So I think that this will help both the high school and the programs at the middle school.
Mm-hmm. Any other discussion?
Just a question. So we've already applied for this and we're hoping to hear in the next couple of days?
Uh, correct. We have submitted the application, um, and the application stated that given the summer schedule, we could submit the board minutes at a later date, um, pending board approval. But the grant, uh, states that the board has to approve the application of it. So, um, they're aware that we're doing it at this time.
Okay. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Any abstentions? Motion 6B passes. Okay. Tonight's meeting, we have reports and discussions on first, our budget update. Mr. Emmett?
Yes. First and foremost, let's talk briefly about the, uh, budget for 1617. Um, we had a meeting this evening prior to the board meeting around the, uh, 1617 budget. Uh, as you know, uh, last year, we ran a deficit for the better part of the year. In addition to that, we had in September, the loss of approximately $46,000 of, um, open choice grant money. Uh, we had the issue with the minimum budget requirement where we were underfunded by approximately, uh, $240,000. On December 29th, we had the situation where the state, an unprecedented move, reduced ECS to the tune of approximately 152,000. Uh, that left the net with the, uh, minimum budget requirement at 88,000 and change. We worked with the town to solve that issue and we were able to solve it. Um, in January, when that ECS cut came in, I enacted a budget freeze where we significantly limited, uh, the non-discretionary spending. Um, that budget freeze proved to be wise, given the fact that, um, we did run over budget in several areas, including special education. Uh, very pleased to report that Mr. Kazak, our business manager, reports that, um, we actually finished the year in the black and will be returning to the town approximately $20,900. So, that's the piece with regard to the 2016-17 budget. With regard to 1718, um, I mentioned it before. Let me get into a little bit more detail with regard to that, in terms of where we're at. As I mentioned already, we are prepared and ready to go to open up on the 31st of August. But we also know that there is the potential out there of seeing cuts, whether it be $9.3 million or something less than that, but still significant. We have scenarios in place already through our budget process over the past year where we have a reduction of a million dollars and a reduction of a million and a half dollars. Please understand that as it was, to get to the budget where we were at with a 2.06% increase, um, we cut 500,000. That included a, um, administrative position that is not being filled, uh, through attrition and a halftime, a full-time position, uh, we will have a retirement for next month. Uh, that position, we're intending to fill part-time. With that being said, this evening, the Finance and Information Management Committee charged us with coming up with reduction scenarios at million-dollar increments. Um, again, let me be clear to all of the groups that do fundraising or rely upon, um, the board budget. Uh, DECA, DECA comes to mind, it's a perfect example. All of these groups that rely upon board funding, whether it be for field trips, whether it be for extracurricular activities, need to start thinking about alternatives. How will you fundraise in the event we can't support it? In addition to that, we have cut over the past two years. Our increase in our budget has averaged less than 2% over the past two years. We've cut back on supplies, we've cut back on operations and maintenance. We've been limited with regard to even technology. Remember last year, we didn't hi, um, get any additional technology. So, we're tight to begin with. And when you start talking about multi-million dollar cuts, you are talking about people. It's inevitable. And I go back to the parents that, that I listened to, very eloquent. I, your message was perfect and I love the research as well, as a fellow researcher. I love that. But the reality is, if we have to cut positions, we're going to have to cut positions. So, right now, we'll be starting off at million-dollar increments. We're going to go up to the $4 million mark in terms of reductions to see where we're at at that point in time. I would urge, and I'm not one that likes to play the political game, that's not me. I prefer to run the school district to make sure our kids have what they need to succeed. I would strongly suggest that you reach out to your legislators and, and ask that they continue to push forward on getting a budget in place. I speak for Weathersfield, but I know in talking with my colleagues, most recently with Dr. Collins over in Newington, uh, second year of a 0% increase and the loss of approximately $11 million of ECS monies. That's difficult. Um, and I can go on and on, from Rocky Hill to Berlin to Cromwell. Um, everybody is facing this. So this is the reality that we must face. But in the short term, I assure you that we will have what we need to get the year started. Um, there is a lot of additional information that we're going to need to come together with. And obviously for us, it's going to be imperative that we communicate with you. So we'll be utilizing a variety of different methods, from having information out at open houses, which are coming up very shortly, uh, PTO meetings. I'll be looking to meet with WSPC representatives to get the message out. We'll be utilizing our television studio to get the message out as well. Um, I tend to use school messenger, but I, I've learned this evening that people hang up on me when I do school messenger. I can't believe that. So we want to make sure we use multiple means of communication so that
I've just heard that.
We want to use multiple means of communication to make sure that you're in the know. And the reality of it is this, everything is up in the air. There is no hard and fast number. We really need our leadership at, at the state level to come together and, and come up with a solution so that school districts can run effectively and we can provide our kids with what they need.
Okay, I just wanted to make a comment. We did have the finance committee meeting before we met tonight and we decided that we didn't want a doom and gloom message brought out there, but we need to be prepared. Um, and all of us are, you know, distraught over these kind of cuts, but we need, we do need to be prepared moving forward. Anyone else on budget? No? So can we move on to our summer facilities update? Mr. Bushy?
Thank you, Michael.
Good evening, folks. Hope your summer was well. Uh, before you, I, I know, I'm sure you had a chance to read what was in your packet for Friday. I'll just go briefly through, through all the different schools that we have here. One of the biggest things we got done this summer was we were able to catch up on our work orders, um, that, um, kind of got stuck in alerts here a little bit. So, uh, most of our backlog has been taken care of the, you know, the little things that we weren't able to get, get, get taken care of. Uh, and that's for all schools. Uh, Weathersfield High School, um, the project is 99.999% done. The, the, uh, the last thing that's going on now is the roof screens are being put up for, uh, to cover the equipment that's on the roof. And I can see that, uh, happening here within the next three weeks.
Okay.
We're probably about two-thirds of the way up now. Um, all the punchless items have been taken care of, so we're, we're kind of moving into closeout. Uh, the middle school had a little problem with the, uh, media center and, uh, some, uh, a few broken pipes that was taken care of. The right, uh, media center was, uh, re-carpeted and we're moving forward. Emerson Williams, um, is probably the biggest, uh, thing we have here over the summer. Uh, we have two separate projects going on there. One, the, the redoing of the gymnasium, uh, due to the failed floor. That, right now, is probably at 90% complete and I'm looking for absolutely total completion here within the next week. Um, it's looking very good. Everything is coming into, coming into play the way it should be. Uh, we had a capital improvement project to replace the rest of the carpet, get the carpet out and replace it with, uh, vinyl composite tile. Uh, the, all the classrooms have been addressed and right now, they're probably, um, and actually as of five o'clock tonight, they're probably two-thirds of the way through the hallways. So I'm looking forward for them to, uh, be finished with this by, uh, tomorrow evening, in which case we can take and get our furniture back into the classrooms and make ready for the kids for, uh, for Monday to, uh, come in for the open house that they have.
Have the teachers been able to set up their classrooms there?
Uh, most, most have. I have a few that have not on, on the east side, Ms. Granato.
Okay.
So, uh, but there are, but everyone has been in. We've been able to get them, you know, kind of through the building, kind of walking through. A lot of furniture's still in the hallways, but, uh, but that's probably the, the worst building that we have as far as, you know, moving forward and getting that, getting that completed. The, the Charles Wright School, uh, between Charles Wright and Hamner School, we had two asbestos abatements going on. The, both art rooms, the floors buckled and we had some serious problems there with trip hazards. Uh, the floor was asbestos-laden, um, tile, so it had to be removed, had to be removed under, you know, un, under abatement. I can report that that is done. The new tile is down and the rooms are back together and they're ready to be, uh, ready for the kids to come back, uh, next week. So, um, Highcrest School, Highcrest School is, is, uh, the, actually the PTO stepped up and, and purchased lockers for the sixth grade, uh, pot area. Uh, those have been installed. Uh, the last finishing touches went in today. I have a couple of damaged ones, but that, that's not, that, that'll be taken care of and, uh, just a new, a new thing for one of our elementary schools. So, it kind of touches on the highlights of, of all our buildings. Uh, I'm sure you may have questions, so please ask.
I have one for you about the creation of new sensory room. John? I'm very excited to see that.
Yes, over at Highcrest.
Yes.
The purchases, actually, um, the school psychologist made a move to another room to allow for that to happen and we made some purchases to a sensory room.
Excellent. Great.
That was, that was, just take some moves around. We had to move it from one end of the building to the other end, but, uh, to make it work.
Janet?
Uh, Mr. Bushy, can you explain a little bit about, um, the tile issue that we had at Emerson? Um, I, obviously I know what happened. I'd had to explain to quite a few people that in the Emerson-Williams district what happened, but can you elaborate as to why we had to have this issue?
Which, which, which one, ma'am?
Uh, the tile at Emerson. Have we had to?
Uh, the, the Capitol project or?
No, the, I'm sorry, at the, in the
Gymnasium.
Yes, please.
Gymnasium. The, the, the infrastructure of the floor failed. There was moisture within the floor that just, that is what's known as a slab-on-grade, okay, meaning that concrete slab is, is abutted to the ground. Um, there were voids in the floor that caused moisture to, to build up. Over the years, some of the, the, um, materials that they use to level the floor off, they use a gypsum-type material, which is not concrete, is more a, it, it's not a cementous-type material, it's more of a chalky material. It does coagulate, it does harden very well and it, in some spots, it does, it, it is okay to do that. But by putting a, a rubber floor down on this, and this, we went through this the first time that we had this done and had, had, um, had readings taken, uh, on the floor to ensure that these, you know, that the readings were good and they were within the, the proper parameters for laying the floor down. Um, we found that we got a little bit more of, uh, moisture within there and that some We found that we got a little bit more of moisture within there, and that some of the patch material that was not put on while, when the floor was installed two years ago, but patch material that was installed many years ago, actually lifted and caused the bubbling of the floor, which I'm sure that you seen, and some members of the board had seen.
So, this wasn't a contractor issue, correct?
This was not a contractor issue. This was, this was kind of an over-the-years type of thing. What we did here this time, we actually took that whole layer of floor off, probably almost up to between, I would say, three-quarters of an inch to almost two inches of flooring material, by hand, this was taken up. There was no other way to do that. And re-jackhammered, repoured with a cementous material, not a gypsum material. So, concrete was put down on the floor. The leveling material was put on top of that, so we have a nice leveled surface for the rubber floor to be installed. Again, you're probably at, you know, seven-eighths completed for that floor. Some lines may have to be painted. We will be able to open the gym up on the first day of school. I think that we may be minus a couple of lines, but we'll take care of that over, you know, in the ensuing weekends.
Thank you.
May I ask, excuse me?
Polly?
So, basically, the, this, to follow up on Janet's question about it being a contract, a contractor issue, so none of this was reimbursable, this was not a problem with, when it was installed, when it was reinstalled or repaired?
Well, when it was reinstalled, this actually went as a, as a request to KERMA for, you know, insurance reimbursement.
Oh, okay.
And we did get, we did get full approval for this, minus our deductible.
Yeah, oh, okay, so it was not under any kind of warranty or anything like that?
No, the warranty had actually been up for this floor. They made some minor repairs, we, you know, we went through a period of minor repairs trying to get this, trying to get this taken care of, but they did not adhere, so, we had to go, ended up having to go this route.
Okay, thank you.
Kevin?
Regarding the high school and the pool, I understand there's a delay for the starting blocks, there's a delay from the manufacturer?
There is.
There is. Now, would that, I know the old ones are still in place?
Correct.
So, would there be any interruption for the swim team?
Absolutely none. They're, they're, they're almost a, according to phrase, a plug-and-play. Whatever's there now, they get unbolted and rebolted. So, it's not a, it's maybe a half a day that it'll take to do that. And I will make sure that that happens. We have, over the week's time during the, during the day, we have a couple of days where the curriculum is not used in the pool. So, I'll make sure and try to stagger that, and make sure it gets done there. And I do believe that, in my last conversation, maybe four to six hours to get everything done, so, you know, I'm pretty confident we can get it done at one shot.
When do they do?
Diane?
I do not have a date as of today. I've been speaking with them almost on a daily basis. We did have an issue trying to get the logo, between the Eagle logo and the W, the proper, how can I say this, proper pixels, I guess. What I sent them, they tried to blow it up, it wouldn't, it didn't really mirror the image of what I sent them, so that was no good. And almost daily here for the past week, I've been sending them different renditions of our logo, of our W, of our, colors are all set, absolutely navy blue, gold on the Eagle's beak, and, you know, and the white outline. It's just the, yeah, navy blue, navy blue, folks, please, navy blue. But, kinda...
You know they're gonna come back red, Fred. You know they're gonna come back red.
Yeah, I'm sure. But, in any case, I'm trying to get on, you know, keep on this, Ms. Fitzpatrick, to make sure that, you know, we try to get them in due time here. I, you know, I understand, we do start this Thursday, and the pool is filled, it is ready to go, it is heated, it is chemically balanced, so we are, you know, we are good to go. The record board is up, the, you know, a few other peripherals that we needed to do there are taken care of. The only thing that has not been done is the old record board, because I was unsure whether that was to come down or not. Mr. Maltezi has indicated that it should come down, so we will take care of that.
Fred, if you could also mention, I know during the course of the summer, we have these state-of-the-art lights, and we had one bank that has already failed that we had replaced under warranty. I noticed when I was in the pool, yes, not swimming in the pool, of course, but just checking to see progress, we have another one that appears to have a balance that's gone bad.
We actually have three.
Okay.
We actually have three. We have one, one that was repaired, one that's now starting to blink again, and one that's very dim, which I think that is going. I have an email out to the corporation, it just comes from California. I'm trying to see, excuse me, whether or not parts are local and I can actually get these. If, if I, you know, if I have to keep ordering these things and have to wait a period of time for, for, you know, having shipped in, what have you, I am going to look to purchase to have something on hand in case something like this happens. These are, we've been considered, just another FYI here about these lights, there's nowhere in the, in the country that has these lights outside of college campuses. This is the first high school that these were installed in. They actually reached out to me to see if they would, you know, could we do like an expose of this? And I said, well, I says, you know, we're trying to wrap our summer up here, and when I, I says, in order for me to do that, I says, I will have to reach out to Mr. Emmett and to the board to make sure that we want this type of exposure, but...
For a price, Fred.
Well, for a price, absolutely, because, you know, I need to pad, I need to pad my budget a little bit here, Ms. Granado, so. But in any case, that was, you know, I felt that was a good thing, but I think we'll be good to go. Hopefully, I get the parts to fix the light that's bad now before the kids start here next week, so.
Okay, great. Any other questions?
I had one. The Emerson floor, do we have a reasonable expectation that the new cementaceous underlayment is gonna be waterproof enough so we don't have this problem?
It's absolutely, because a moisture mitigation, after they poured the cementous material on top of that, moisture mitigation of a epoxy-bound type of material was poured over the top of that. So, it's just like sealing it at 100%, okay? And it's gone from, from, from north to south, to east to west, went underneath the stage just a little bit to catch the lip where the, where the floor is, and we have two alcoves that were not done before in the original, and I made them go into those two little alcoves here, going up into the stage area, to take care of that too. So, when they did pour the floor, it was a very glossy finish there, they actually had to rough that up, to put the glue down, to lay down the material.
Excellent.
Anyone else?
I just wanted to ask you, I noticed that we had, you installed two water coolers, one at Hamner and one at Emerson-Williams, that had been donated by PTOs. Was there another one at an earlier time or last year? Was it Highcrest where the PTOs?
PTOs have stepped up, we've had these, just a little historical. PTOs have stepped up after they've seen what, after our administration has seen what has been put in at the high school?
Yeah.
For bottle fillers?
Right.
For the children? And they, I, obviously, they're not budgeted for, I can't just go out and do these. So, the PTOs have actually stepped up and said, you know, if we get these, and I said, well, you know, let me, what do you want, how many do you wanna do? And let me go to my supplier, and if I go and I say we're gonna do three or four of these, five of these, I'll be able to get, you know, a little bit of a mass discount for them. PTOs stepped up at Highcrest, at Webb, at Hamner, and at Emerson-Williams to install these. These are all installed, they were all paid for by the PTO, and obviously, my staff installed.
Yeah, I did wanna mention that, because I think that was absolutely a wonderful gesture on their part, and also, at Hamner, or, I'm sorry, at Highcrest, installing the, or donating the lockers for the sixth graders. I mean, that's a...
That's, that's something that they, that the PTO came up with, yes.
That we can count on them. Thank you.
One other thing, just, this is something new, it was something new to me, and even Mr. Emmett. The Webb parents wanted to get into a different type of, I call a dodgeball, I guess, and it's called a Gaga pit. And if y'all don't know what a Gaga pit is, please, please Google it, please look at it. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's an octagon, it's an octagon-shaped...
You have to explain this, Fred.
...shape play area, that I'm gonna put wood chips in, and they have a ball, and they throw the ball at each other, and they hit them, and you're out, and then this one, I don't understand the game, but it is pretty neat. Mr. Emmett kinda witnessed it, because we have, we have our Y program over at Hamner School, and they, they have a portable one set up there where they play. So, I'm sure, you know, we're gonna have this at the Webb Elementary School, and I'm sure we're going to see it expand out to some of our others, so. Please have a look when you get a chance to run by Webb.
We're actually looking at it right now.
Oh, there you go.
We're not new to all millennials, but we're all right.
Good.
We're cutting technology.
So, we, now, we got so excited looking at, we have one, is that what you're saying?
There, I believe that the, that the material is, was, the town actually stepped up and did the preparation on the ground, and that's been taken care of. It was shipped through the PTO mom that I'm dealing with, it was shipped Friday. We should see it onsite, maybe tomorrow or Thursday, and actually, PTO folks are going to put this together.
Great, great.
Very nice, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else for question for Fred? Thank you, thank you very much.
Welcome to the new year.
Yes. Okay, and we're also gonna have a report on projected class sizes. Mr. Emmett, do you wanna take that?
Yeah, I'll be happy to take that. I had mentioned earlier with regard to the situation at Charles Wright. Across the rest of the district, at this point in time, things look stable. I want to also speak to the Hamner kindergarten sections. We currently have three, they have been running low throughout the course of the summer. We currently have a total of five students in the pipeline. In addition to that, I have two open-choice kindergarteners coming in that were coming into Emerson, so I've moved them over to Hamner to maintain three sections at Hamner. Right now, we project out at 15, 15, 15. Throughout the course of the district, at this point in time, once we level, we will have no more than 24 kids in a class. Obviously, we like to see that lower, but as I mentioned before, we do not have funding to add additional teachers, hence, you know, obviously, we're reducing the number of sections at Charles Wright to get that additional kindergarten teacher. Currently, right now, we have 16, 16, and 15 with those three sections, moving to the two sections is 24 and 23. It's certainly not optimal, but at the same time, looking at the difference between sixth grade and kindergarten, we see kindergarten is the bigger need at this point in time. I think this also speaks to the need to kind of further our discussion around the issue of looking at redistricting. You know, we talked back in June about the process of developing our 10-year capital plan. It's very interesting to see the number of students in the enrollment, you know, looking at Webb Elementary School. That sixth grade class currently is 24 and 24, it's not optimal, but you go to kindergarten at Webb, and currently, I've got 15 and 13, with four in the pipeline. So, we've got two sections across each grade level at Webb, and in certain cases, we've got, like Highcrest, for example, we've got three sections across the board. And I'll be clear with you, with the number at Highcrest, Highcrest is on the cusp in kindergarten, quite frankly. But right now, in terms of the priority, it was clear with the projections as of this afternoon, we're looking at 24 and 24 on those two kindergarten classes, and it just, I can wholeheartedly agree. And I wanna reiterate again, as I mentioned, with regard to the budget, we look at these significant cuts. Inevitably, it's gonna be classroom teachers, and the class size is gonna go up, and it's going to become a moot point. Beyond that, we certainly wanna take a look, we're not, you know, we focused on the elementary level. At the middle and high school level, we do have some sections that are well-subscribed, certainly our Unified Arts. At the middle school, our World Language, we have several of those classes that are quite, quite large. And then at the high school, we have courses that are very, very popular, and so we're monitoring there as well. But the hard part is, you look at the class sizes that you have, you'd love to be able to add teachers, and it's just, it's unfortunately, not that easy, so, go ahead.
Any comment? Diane?
Yeah, what, you know, when I look at Hamner, they have three kindergarten classes, 14, 13, and 12. Why can't we take the 12 kindergarten teacher, bring her over to, him or her over to Charles Wright? That would still keep Hamner's kindergartens below 20, rather than, you know, reshuffling the sixth grade. I mean, to me, that's, those are pretty low class sizes.
What, as I had mentioned, Diane, I have several kids in the pipelines, so these are kids that aren't on the list yet, but are in the process of InfoSnap. So, I've got five at Hamner that are going in, plus I have the two open-choice from Emerson to reduce the Emerson kindergarten numbers. Currently, I'm at 20, 19, and 19. I'm gonna move those open-choice kids over. The reason I'm moving the open-choice kids over at the kindergarten level is they have not yet established, so we can move them to any school at this point in time. So, that's the mantra behind that, that particular piece. We have other kids, as I mentioned, at Webb, we have four kids in the pipeline. We believe two of those may not be coming in, we have two others that are in the process now. And this information is as of this afternoon.
I mean, the one thing that concerns me, I'm glad we're doing that for Charles Wright, 'cause I've seen those classrooms, and I agree with the points made by the speakers here tonight. I, the other night after our meeting, driving up Knott Street, and I go down Goff Road, between the Charles Wright District and that edge of Webb's District, I counted over 20 houses for sale. And these are starter homes, so there's gonna be more kids coming into those, to those schools. And I concur, I mean, I think, you know, I know people hate the R-word, but when you look at Webb, which I think is the biggest elementary school we have, only having half of what some of the other schools have, I mean, there's a lot, it looks like there's a lot of empty rooms there. And, you know, it can take some of the burden off of Emerson and Highcrest specifically. Those two schools were the feeder schools when Webb was created. And in its day, when Webb first opened, Webb had the largest population. So, I really think we're underutilizing a valuable resource there at Webb.
Anyone else? Matthew?
On that topic, I think Diane makes excellent points, the speakers, obviously, and we all concur. Is there a method that maybe hasn't been used, Weathersfield in particular, but allows us some flexibility that's not one of these full-born redistricting, but where, I mean, I could see, I feel like if we were to do a full redistricting, like it works for a year, you get everything nice, diversity's good, and then, you know, two years goes by, and you get a bump, you can get, you know, just a birth bump on any one of these areas, and then moving out and the rest of it. So, is there a way to have a district with sort of the neighborhood schools concept, but provides you a little bit more flexibility than the rigidness of the line? Or, maybe parents get an option in some way? I don't know that, how it would work out, but I, but if other towns, other towns gotta have school districts similar to ours, and if there's some type of a flex program that we could put in even, to give you some options, maybe parents some options, maybe it's, you know, with some type of recommendations and approval by the superintendent, to allow that type of flexibility that we're talking about, especially in the short term, if redistricting takes, to properly do it, takes a year or two, or whatever it is. Of course, we're talking about... Of course, we're talking on our 10-year plan, and just talking about different types of constructs with buildings and so forth, and space needs. So it seems like in the short term, maybe to help some of our bubble issues, that we consider some type of a flex process.
Yeah, can, can we get, because the last time we redistricted was when Webb opened, and that was the first class that went into Webb, the kindergarten class, is the class that's graduating this year, the class of 2018. They were the first kindergarteners in their neighborhood schools. And I remember, I mean, there was all sorts of controversy, because the sixth grade, a lot of sixth graders had to get pulled out of Highcrest to Webb and Emerson and so forth. But there, if I remember correctly, there are parts of the Emerson Williams District and the Highcrest District where one side of the street went to Webb, and one side of the street went to Emerson, and the same at Highcrest, like I think Thornbush was split half and half. Ridge Road, half of Ridge Road went to Highcrest, the other side went to Emerson. So it would seem to me that as we look at these, that those are the three schools that we, and maybe we do not a full-blown redistricting, but we look at, you know, the neighborhoods and so forth, as to how maybe some kids can be taken from Emerson and Highcrest. You know, those kids that are on Thornbush, or, you know, those, that area of town and down Collier, along Prospect Street, and the same with Emerson, rather than, you know, dragging Charles Wright and Highcrest into it, if there's kind of like a pseudo or mini, you know, redistricting plan, kind of to lessen the impact, because it is very emotional, especially for fifth and sixth grade parents, although the kids didn't seem to mind, it was the parents that did the most. You know, making that transition to a new school, and it is, you know, when you've been with other kids for six years and then have to move, but to kind of lessen the pain, if we look at those, you know, how we do that. I mean, there are kids that live two blocks from Webb on Prospect that go to Emerson, like John, I think across the street from where you live. I know all those people.
We went to Emerson, and the kids across the street went to Highcrest.
I mean, the line's gotta be drawn somewhere, that's why.
Well, yeah, that's why I'm saying, I mean, there may be ways to just move those lines ever so slightly for us to get a better balance.
Or maybe there's an area near those lines, it's called like a flex district, you know, and so normally, a parent can choose, and...
Oh, you don't want to get to choosing.
Or there's some process by which, you know, we can help.
You're either all in, or you're all out.
But it might give some flexibility, at least to the district, to even up class sizes.
So maybe if we could get a map, I don't know if there's a map. I remember there's a map when they did it back in, what was it, 2005? I remember, I was on the building committee, I think I can remember. Well, it's this class, so 12 years.
2005.
Yeah, 2005.
2005, 2006.
Okay, anyone else for discussion on class size? I thought, I just made a comment, the parents who came up for Charles Wright for the kindergarten were spot on. That's exactly what it's all about, is that K through two, K through three years, and this board focuses on small class sizes. We communicated to the administration, we also have a budget, which, you know, I roll my eyes, because it's a very challenging budget, but all summer, we did look at the numbers, we watched them very closely, which I think is our responsibility. So thank you, thank you. Okay, we'll go on to our Board of Ed meetings held, and have, let's see, Kevin, talk about a perfect segue on our facilities meeting.
Yes, Matt, back in June, the Facilities Maintenance Committee met. We had representatives from Collier International make a presentation to the committee. They work with school districts and municipalities throughout the state, a construction management firm. They went through a slideshow, basically discussed what they do, what they offer to various districts in terms of construction. We talked about new factors with our own elementary schools, looking into the future, you know, the pluses and minuses versus new construction versus renovation, and that sort of thing. It was an excellent discussion, very eye-opening, about going through our own high school renovation, kind of what would we do differently? When looking at our elementary schools, I know we had a speaker earlier today that said they, some, like including Charles Wright, are a little weathered, so we're looking into the future.
That was polite.
Looking into the future there. And also, during that meeting, Fred, as he did earlier, kind of gave us an update of what he would be, would be doing through the summer, and today, we got a little capstone on what was completed through the summer.
And part of that, if I can just say, it was a great committee meeting, and we talked about a 10-year plan, which is a great way to look at things, is, well, for the town and for the schools, but fascinating work they were doing. Thank you. Anyone for any discussion on that? Okay, so Janet, would you do on our Memorial Day Parade Committee?
Yes. It was a very successful parade. We honored the Fidalco, excuse me, Association, and we had a couple of the dogs walking with some of the now owners of these beautiful animals. It was, I enjoyed walking the parade, I enjoyed seeing the students that were marching, and in the, you know, side streets, seeing some former teachers, current teachers, and it was great, the kids enjoy that. I know that I personally enjoyed seeing some of the teachers that my students had, I'm sorry, that my kids had. So it was a great day, it was beautiful, and we had a great time, and it was fun, you know, every year, it turns out to be better and better, I think. And I think the best part was, the essay was a great essay this year, great essay. They're great every year, I just think they get better and better. It was great.
Okay, thank you. And the CREG Council met on June 21st, the meeting was held at the CREG headquarters in Hartford, and CREG is, to remind, is the Capital Region Education Council, and Weathersfield's one of the 35 towns that make up the council. The meeting was the final meeting for the 2016-17 school year, and the discussion was very typical for most of the year that we had, was the state budget. The lack of state budget also impacts CREG, as they operate the CREG magnet schools and Project Choice, and many professional development opportunities for the member towns. The individual town representatives were discussing both options of acting now, or waiting for a budget to come from the state, and then implementing any necessary changes, so you could see things didn't change over the summer. The next meeting is next week on September 20th. Okay, and we have School Projects and Building Committee, Michael?
We had a very difficult time getting a quorum throughout the course of the summer. However, we were able to successfully come together and meet on the 14th of August. Again, the roof screening was discussed, in addition to that, we're looking at the finances. I remain adamant about needing to get that last batch of equipment, technology equipment. In addition to that, Mr. Bushy is looking for some additional furniture. When this project was developed, we had a projection of 24 in a classroom. As I mentioned earlier during my report on class size, we have some classes that are subscribed above that, so Mr. Bushy's looking for some furniture. At this point in time, financially, the project looks to be okay. We'll be coming back together again to see what's left in the budget after the roof screens go in. In addition to that, I know there was a variety of different landscaping items that needed some significant attention, so. I was at the high school today, and I know that the contractor was there actually, yeah, redoing, so there's definitely that component. Not related to the Building Committee, but I certainly want to give a shout out to the town of Weathersfield with regard to the turf field, the cotone field. The football team has been on it. We're still doing some final work on Little Cotone Field, where the new softball field is, but it's gotten rave reviews thus far, and I have to say, over the course of the summer, the architect that worked on this project was absolutely spot on, in terms of holding the contractor accountable, and making sure that this project got done. So that is going to be a showpiece, beautiful, beautiful facility.
Okay, thank you. And our Special Board of Ed meeting on August 16th, Diane?
This is a special ed, oh, special ed, a special board meeting held in accordance with the Tenure Teacher statutes. This was a termination hearing regarding a tenured teacher. Over the course of a year, various hearings were held. A independent hearing officer reviewed the case, made recommendations that the individual be terminated, and the board discussed it at the hearing, and endorsed the recommendations of the independent hearing officer, and moved to terminate the contract of the tenured teacher.
Thank you. And our Finance and Information Management Committee meeting, which we had this evening?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Emmett, for giving most of my report. So we'll see you all in September. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so we do have meetings scheduled, we have WEC, which is Weathersfield Early Childhood Collaborative, on Monday, September 11th, 2017, at 4:30. School Projects Building Committee on September 11th at 6:30, and Finance and Information Management Committee on September 12th at 6 o'clock.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, on this WEC, or maybe Matthew, you can help me out here, this WEC meeting on September 11th, that's their annual meeting, right?
I believe it is.
Yeah, okay.
How good, they didn't say that, thank you.
I think it, I think it is on the report.
Okay.
I think it is as well.
I mean, I reserve the right to be 20% wrong on that, but I think you're right.
20%.
Okay. All right. I know, yeah, I thought it was coming up in September.
We need humor now.
Okay, I'll double check that. Thank you very much.
Okay. Anyone else? Is there any unfinished business? Okay, again, if there's anyone wishing to make comments, please come on up to the podium and state your name and address, and may I remind you that your time is limited to five Okay, is there any board comments? Anyone have any board comments? Diane?
They, I got some emails over the past couple days about computer science classes at the high school, AP and so forth, that they're not gonna be offered.
Yes, at this point in time, that's on hold.
How come?
Budgetary. Because what happens is, we have a teacher that's already teaching five classes, and he'd have to move up to six classes, and there's a stipend involved in that, so we're holding off.
And how many kids are impacted by that?
Mr. Moore?
Can we get all the numbers from the middle school and high school, too? I meant to say that when we were there. Okay. Anyone else? Okay, can I have a motion? May I make a motion to move to executive session for the purpose of discussion regarding the superintendent of schools evaluation?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? All right, that concludes the public part of our meeting. Thank you for coming and for watching. Good night.